Good evening. This is a public hearing of the Zoning Board of Appeals. The zoning ordinance empowers us to hear references from the city council, petitions from other parties for variances and special uses, and appeals from decisions of the zoning administrator. We hear testimony from those in attendance and then make formal findings of fact based on the evidence presented, which consists of testimony and exhibits and on our knowledge of the community. We then either make a determination or recommendation to the city council. Testimony is taken under oath. Although we do not apply the strict rules of evidence and procedures, we ask that you keep your testimony relevant to the proposal as it relates to the standards contained in the zoning ordinance. When you testify, please state your name and address for the record. Print your name on the sign-in sheet provided outside the door. Each case will be introduced by staff and a list of documents will be read into the record. Then the applicant will give an explanation of the proposal. After that, those who wish to testify as either proponents or opponents of the case will have the chance to do so, and then the applicant will have a chance to respond. Any case not concluded at tonight's hearing will be continued to our next meeting. Melissa, please call the roll.
Mary McCauley.
Present.
Scott Gingold.
Present.
Violetta Cullen.
Present.
Mary Beth Burns.
Murnee Aravalo.
Here.
Lisa Deacon.
Kirill Miranchov.
Here.
Tonight, we have two cases on record, 2035 Dodge, which is old business, and new business, 1215 Church Street and 1726 to 1730 Ridge Avenue. I will now swear in anyone who plans to give testimony in any of the cases scheduled for tonight. Will you raise your right hand? Do you swear and affirm that the testimony you will provide in connection with this case will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. Melissa, can you read the first case?
Junior Anderson, property owner, applies for major zoning relief to construct a two-family residence with a detached garage in the R3 two-family residential district. The applicant requests two dwelling units on a total lot size of 5,943 square feet, where a minimum 7,000 square foot lot size is required for a two-family residence, zoning code section 6844. The Zoning Board of Appeals is the determining body for this case. Documents included as part of the record include variation application submitted March 20th, 2018, zoning analysis, plat of survey, site plans and elevations revised May 8th, 2018, image of property, aerial view of property, zoning map of property, DAPR meeting minutes excerpt of April 4th, 2018, and DAPR draft meeting minutes of April 11th, 2018.
Thank you. Sir, will you state your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Junior Anderson with 2035 Dodge, Evanston.
Thank you. Would you like to present your case?
Chair. I'm presenting a two-unit. One of the units are going to be 80% rental rate for affordable housing. And we signed what 10-year lease, 10-year agreement with affordable housing for that.
You've signed, you've already signed that agreement?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
When you hear last, they ask you to revise your plan in accordance with our ordinances. Have you done that?
Yes.
What changes have you made?
We made all the changes Melissa requested.
The applicant was given a list of just quick comments that showed inconsistencies with the plans, not actual changes to any of the zoning regulations, and the revised plan did address those inconsistencies.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Anderson?
So I understand that the revised plan only requires you to seek one variations, that you're understanding as well?
Correct.
And that variation is the fact that this two-family residence is not being built on a lot large enough allowable for that development?
Correct.
So there are no other variations being sought in connection with this development?
I don't understand that question. What was that?
You're not seeking any other variations?
No, no.
Can you describe a little bit why there's a need for a three-car garage rather than two?
Just to give the tenants an extra space. I mean, the lot is wide enough.
Also, the zoning ordinance requires three parking spaces for a two-flat.
Oh, thank you. I didn't even know that. So I'm glad it fit. That's why I hired the architect for it.
Who is your architect, sir?
His name is Victor Cuevas from the City of Chicago.
Okay.
I know that there was some discussion at DAPR about including awnings and other adornments to enliven the facade, the front facade of the property. Have you, so the awning is included?
Yes, the awning is in front of the front door, and we did put the windows fixtures on the sides.
Okay. And I saw that you, you had a nice landscaping plan.
Yes.
In the drawings, and so that will be fully executed and completed as well?
Sure, yes.
Okay.
Definitely.
So with a commitment to have one unit rented at an affordable housing rate, can you describe, are both units intended, are you intending both units will be for rental? Or are you planning to live in a unit?
No, no, both units will be for rental.
Further questions from the board? No.
Anything else?
Not for me.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We're going to close the case for deliberations. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this project? No one? Thank you. Ideas and thoughts?
I appreciate the fact that Mr. Anderson has worked so hard to, worked so hard with the city to achieve what I believe is a, to call it the minimal change is not really appropriate given this application because there's nothing he can do to change the lot size, but to minimize the impact that a would-be kind of oversized development for the lot has in that he's complying with all of the zoning requirements other than the one he can't comply with by nature of this development and the size of the lot. I also think the public benefit being offered in terms of an affordable unit is significant. There are not enough affordable units in Evanston, particularly of this proposed size, rental size, and therefore whatever impact above what the ordinance attempts to achieve, I think, is mitigated substantially by the benefit that's being added. So I'm, I'm fully in favor of the project. I think it's, it's a nice project, and I, again, I'm appreciative of Mr. Anderson's effort to work with the city on it.
Thank you.
I agree with Scott, and I would further say that there's a real need for three-bedroom, especially three-bedroom, two-bath apartments. And so I think that it is definitely a benefit over having a single-family home at that location, so I would favor this as well.
I, I agree. It's a good project.
I'm in favor of the project. I will extend a little bit my duties as a member of the zoning board. I still think that this project needs improvement as a facade, so please work with your architect. We're a zoning board, it's not my business, but we still want this city to be a beautiful city. So you need to put a little bit more effort to make this a really nice building. Otherwise, as a zoning issue, I don't have a problem with it.
I also don't have a problem with the zoning issue. I feel like this community, this area of Evanston really needs some new construction, and it needs some multifamily that's affordable as well, so I agree with this project. If there are any other comments from my board? None other? Okay, I'm going to read the standards. For a variation to be approved, the ZBA must find that the proposed variation one will not have a substantial adverse impact on the use, enjoyment, or property values of adjoining properties. With the revised front facade, the structure will blend well with the surrounding neighborhood and complement the existing housing stock. Number two, is in keeping with the intent of the zoning ordinance. Although the property does not meet the required lot size for a two-family residence, the proposed structures comply with all other zoning regulations. The zoning ordinance allows for the consideration of zoning relief when a public benefit such as an affordable housing unit is provided. Number three, has a hardship or practical difficulty that is particular to the property. The property is not large enough to meet the lot size requirement for a two-family residence as required by the zoning ordinance, but it is large enough to construct a two-family residence that complies with all other zoning regulations that is also appropriate in bulk, height, and use when compared to the surrounding neighborhood. Number four, the property owner would suffer a particular hardship or practical difficulty as distinguished from a mere inconvenience. Without the requested zoning relief, the property can only feature a single-family residence, which would not provide enough cash flow for the unit to be affordable as is proposed as a public benefit. Number five, is not based exclusively upon a desire to extract additional income from the property or a public benefit to the whole will be derived. Additional income will be extracted from the property, but one onsite three-bedroom affordable unit is a substantial public benefit to the community as well as the new construction. Number six, does not have a hardship or practical difficulty that was created by another person having an interest in the property. The property was platted at its size prior to the current ownership. Number seven, is limited to the minimum change necessary to alleviate the particular hardship or practical difficulty. The applicant has worked with staff to modify the proposal multiple times to eliminate the need for zoning relief beyond the requested lot size and variation. If everybody on the board agrees with those standards and the results, I'd like to hear a motion.
I move in the matter 18ZMJV-0022 regarding the development at 2035 Dodge Avenue that we approve the variation requested, subject to the condition that the property be developed in accordance with the documents and testimony submitted.
Second.
The proposal and the second, I move that we move forward in approving this variation.
Can I, can I ask one question?
Yes.
Should we condition this also on the, the execution of the 10-year affordable?
He said it's been executed. I think he signed it for 10 years already.
Okay.
Yeah, previous to this meeting.
Then I, great.
Okay, moved and seconded. Your motion has been approved.
Thank you so much.
Oh, can we get a vote?
I'm going to take a vote.
I'm sorry, I thought we did.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you so much, guys. Take care, good night.
Is there a representative here for the property at 1215 Church Street and 1726 and 1730 Ridge Avenue? Sir, are you the only one speaking?
Well, I have a representative of the YWCA here to answer any questions, but I'm the only one.
Okay, I'd like to swear you in.
Sure. Kristin may swear.
Yeah, right hand if you're going to speak. Okay. Do you swear and affirm that the testimony you will provide in connection with this case will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Melissa, will you read this case into the record?
Karen Singer, President/CEO, applies for a special use permit to expand a community center, public and recreation center, public, the YWCA Evanston North Shore in the R4 general residential district, zoning code section 6853. The Zoning Board of Appeals makes a recommendation to city council, the determining body for this case. Documents included as part of the record include special use application submitted April 19th, 2018, operations summary, ordinance 19069 for the existing special use approval, plats of survey, floor plans, image of property, aerial view of property, zoning map of property, and DAPR draft meeting minutes of May 2nd, 2018.
Thank you. Is there someone that's going to speak for this? Just you?
Speak.
Come up, please. Could you state your name and address for the record?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Hal Frank. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Melcher, Pertil, and Stell. My office is at 1515 East Woodfield Road in Schaumburg. I'm the attorney for the YWCA Evanston North Shore. Very pleased to be before you this evening on the request that Ms. Klatt's just made reference to for a special use permit for a public community center. I just wanted to give you a little bit of background, which you have more extensive background in your application, but I've been working with the Y for several years now. They have an expansion plan that they're anticipating will take two to three years. And they've acquired, two years ago, they acquired the single-family residence at 1726 Ridge Avenue, and that single-family residence was demolished. Last year, they purchased this building, the home that's the subject matter of this particular request at 1730. They've worked with city departments to renovate it, to make it safe, life safety measures and all that, and their goal, our plan at this point, is to use it for workstations for their existing staff. No, they're not going to be having members of the public there or anything, but they have 10 to 12 workstations that they'd like to use the building for. All the parking, I believe, is going to be on the existing, in the existing parking lot for the existing Y campus, and that's, that's about it. This is interim use until they know what the long-term campus expansion plan is.
Very good. So you have no idea how long the interim use will be for this building?
Well, again, two to three years is the plan.
Okay, so I have a couple of questions about this because I did go over there and look at it. The front door that we require, that we're talking about with ADA compliance, that's the side door. It's not a door on Ridge, it's on the side of the building?
I believe.
That's the one. Okay, so you had planned a ramp for that?
I'm not sure.
Well, I looked through the plans, and that's what it was saying.
Yeah, I'm not the person, the person who is in charge of the constructions unfortunately is out of the country, so I can't.
Okay. Would you or your colleague know, you said that you would have how many people working in the building?
Well, 10 to 12 workstations.
And upstairs, you had planned?
That's complete, the whole house is 10 to 12. I think six on the first floor maybe, and the balance upstairs.
Like four?
Right.
And I know that you won't have members of the public upstairs, but had you planned any ADA accessibility for the second floor?
Uh, I don't.
Is it possible? Would you, can I have you at the mic, just because we can't pick you up on the audio?
Sure.
Your name and address, please.
Kristin White, my work address?
Yes, that's right.
Okay, 1215 Church Street, YWCA Evanston.
Thank you.
6201. And Chief Operating Officer.
Oh, great, thank you.
And to your first question, the side door is the point of entry or the back door, but the ADA ramp will be for the side door.
Okay.
And we are not planning any ADA, ADA accessibility on the second floor because that would require substantial renovation to the building, and we don't know if it will be there in two to three years.
I understand that, yeah. And so the people that work upstairs would not require that?
No, we've already identified staff will be placed in that, and so all staff are fully able-bodied and able to maneuver the space.
Okay, perfect. Maybe you want to stay up here because I'm sure our board has questions.
I do have a question. So the plan is then to demolish 1730 Ridge when the YWCA does its major expansion in three years?
I can't confirm that completely. I'm not the architect. We're in the conceptual design phase, and so we have yet to determine what the architect will present us with, but as just a thinking person, I would imagine that's a possibility.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Well, some things, it's either going to, that, the plan is either to renovate that property or demolish it so that something more adaptable to the present needs is.
Correct, and it has been upgraded to make it suitable for work. We added on a new back porch and have done nice interior upgrades to make it a comfortable workspace.
Other questions from the board? No questions?
Does, yeah, sorry. Does the, the application tonight affect at all the properties at 1217 Church or 1713 Asbury? Okay, so you're familiar with the ordinance that has a condition that applies to those properties?
Yes.
So there's no reason why the YWCA can't continue to comply with that?
That's correct. I, I'm not sure I understood the reference in the staff report to including that in this permit.
Me either, just making sure.
Yeah, I didn't understand that, but the condition itself is part of the existing ordinance, and we're not seeking to change that aspect of the existing ordinance.
I, I think that they just wanted that condition to be attached also to the special use.
Right.
Just to affirm that that provision in the ordinance remains, is carried forward with the special use allowance.
Right, again, I don't, it's not a problem. It's just that this is, my understanding is, is what's being requested and proposed is a separate special use permit.
Sure.
And so we're not seeking to amend the existing ordinance with that condition. So I was a little confused by it, but it's not a problem.
Yeah.
So to clarify, that condition is not expressly recommended by staff, it's just noted that that is an existing condition, so this new ordinance will replace the existing special use ordinance, so if you feel that that condition should continue on, then you would need to add it into this new special use.
And we have no problem with that.
So just for clarity for myself, the condition was in the special use that was granted to the Y in 1969? That's the one you're talking about?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. One second. Further questions from the board? Anybody else? Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this project in the audience? Sir, did you sign it? You did? Okay, can I have, swear you in? I don't think you were here when we did the original oath. Please approach the mic and give me your name and address for the record.
Evening.
Good evening.
Tom Rowland, 1735 Asbury Avenue.
Okay, could you raise your right hand? Do you swear and affirm that the testimony you will provide in connection with this case will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, sir. Your comments?
Yes, appreciate the presentation from the group here, and obviously as a neighbor to the YWCA, we're a big supporter of what they do for the neighborhood and for the community. I would say this is, just for reference, for approval for the special use just on the, the house itself that's in question, not for the future expansion of the community center, correct?
We haven't received any plans for the future expansion.
So I just, I'd like to go on record for that, and then also just say that as a neighbor, we would appreciate input on that, obviously, at the next stage for that as it comes forward to the committee. There's two issues I see from the neighborhood that are adjacent to the property of the YWCA today, and one would be light shed from the existing parking lot. Number two would be acoustic noise from the new units they put in to support the facility itself. So I think as we go forward with any redevelopment plans, we just want to make sure we keep an eye on sort of light shed, acoustical issues that address the properties abutting to the west side of the property there.
Those are both valid concerns. They're not in front of the board at the moment, and I would encourage you and encourage the YWCA to work with one another as a neighborhood in trying to come up with a development that makes sense for everybody.
That's great. That's all I just wanted to get on the record for. Okay?
Thank you for your comments. Comments from the board on that? Nobody? Okay, we can close the record. Anybody else wants to speak? Nobody? Thank you. Close the record. Hold on. Mr. Frank, do you have any closing remarks on this project?
I do not, but thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. What are thoughts on this project?
I think as an interim solution, in advance of a major expansion, this is very reasonable, and from all appearances, they've taken every measure to assure the safety of their employees and also accommodation for ADA accessibility on the first floor, notwithstanding the fact that it is not at present or planned to be a public space. So I don't have any objection to this, but the YWCA does really great work in Evanston.
Thank you.
I agree with all that, and having conferred with Melissa, I understand now why the recommendation is there to include the condition that's applicable to the adjacent properties because the special use apparently will require or result in a portion of the ordinance being rewritten, and therefore we want to make sure that condition continues to carry with the amended ordinance.
And I'm good with the project. I love what the YWCA does.
Same here.
I'm excited to see your expansion. I'm glad that you had, had an opportunity to be able to do that, where most, our institutions in Evanston are so very landlocked, so I appreciate that, and I look forward to you coming back with the full expansion of the Y. Thank you. Okay, with that, I will read the special use standards for, to expand a community center, public and recreation center, the YMCA Evanston North Shore. For the ZBA to recommend that the city council grant a special use, the ZBA must find that the proposed special use one is one of the listed special uses for the zoning district in which the property lies. A community center, public and recreation center, public are listed uses for the R4 general residential district. Number two, it complies with the purposes and policies of the comprehensive general plan and the zoning ordinance. The use is compatible to the surrounding neighborhood, subject to special use conditions. The comprehensive plan recognizes the importance of enhancing the existing assets of neighborhoods and encouraging a mixture of residential and institutional uses in neighborhoods. Number three, does not cause a negative cumulative effect in combination with the existing special uses or as a category of land use. There are no other large, large-scale institutional uses in the immediate area, and the proposed special use expansion will not increase the services provided by the Y. Number four, does not interfere with or diminish the value of property in the neighborhood. The proposal is for the temporary use of an existing structure for approximately three years. The only exterior modifications proposed are the addition of an ADA compliant ramp at the interest of 1730 Ridge Avenue. The structures will continue to appear as a single-family residence similar to other structures in the neighborhood. Number five, is adequately served by public facilities and services. The property is adequately connected to public utilities and is surrounded by diverse transportation options, including public transportation. Number six, does not cause undue traffic congestion. The expansion will not increase the number of employees or residents utilizing the facility, so traffic should not be impacted in any way. Number seven, preserves significant historical and architectural resources, that is not applicable. Number eight, preserves significant natural and environmental resources, also not applicable. Number nine, complies with all other applicable regulations. Staff determined the project will comply with all other applicable regulations, including ADA compliance, and will be reviewed in the building permit process if approved. Call for the motion.
I move in the matter ZBA 18ZMJV-0034 that we recommend to city council that this project be approved, subject to the following conditions. One, that the ordinance as revived, revised by an approved special use would include the condition that the two properties known as 1217 Church Street and 1713 Asbury Avenue shall be sold or maintained by the YWCA, and all successors entitled for single-family use only so long as the property is owned R1, and a covenant agreement to this condition shall be submitted in recordable form for each property by the appellant, or I'm sorry, by the applicant, namely the YWCA. I also, the second condition is that the property otherwise be developed and used in accordance with the testimony and documents submitted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? With unanimous approval, we pass you on to the city council for your special use permit. Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Should I mention the last case? Onto the record? Okay, the last. Okay, the last case that we have in new business is 1943 Sherman Avenue, which will be continued without discussion until the... Oh, they withdrew the application. Thank you so much. Anybody want to make a motion for adjournment?
Just to note, we may be looking at adding a special joint meeting sometime in the next 90 days, roughly, so I'll probably be doing some quorum calls, so just be on the watch for those.
Joint with who?
The Plan Commission.
Oh, Plan Commission, okay.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
None.
Good night.